My name is Art Whitman. I'm Chair of the Shasberry Select Board. I would like to call this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, November 20, 2023, at 6:30 PM. First order of business, does anybody have any conflict of interest or anything shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
Do you, do you intersect with the thing that I think...
Number nine.
Oh, it's number nine, yeah. In any way? Is that any of your property?
It's across the road from my property, but it's not my property.
It's not your property?
Okay.
Okay. There are no minutes?
No minutes.
Warrants? I have a warrant for... Check warrant number 16 for $60,231.67. Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Items over $1,000. A and K Agro Services for hauling of gravel, $3,051. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Vermont, $10,218. Fennington Tire, $1,580. Grave Printing and Mailing, $1,227. Elen City, $6,819.
Those are the speed signs with ARPA funds.
Okay. G A Bole Fuel, $1,184. Another one for Bove, $1,313. Innovative Surface Solutions, $5,479. William E. Daley, $4,738. Another one for Daley, $1,751. That's it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, announcements? Any announcements?
We don't have another, we don't have another warrant there?
No.
No.
That's later.
I would like to announce that the Town of Shasberry and the North Shaft Lions is putting on the Polar Express Reading again this year. It will be December 3rd, it's a Sunday at 4:00 PM right here, and should be a lovely time. There'll be a special visitor coming with us, so please join us, and if you have kids or grandkids, come on by.
This is the second year we've done it, and it was a big success. The first year...
It was a very good success.
Any other announcements? No, I mean...
No.
Okay. Public comments. Oliver, you're on the agenda, so anybody else? Is there anybody that has public comments? Treasures report. Melanie?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Can we start with the cash flow, please? Yeah, that one. Okay. Obviously, so far, November has been all about collecting taxes. They were due on November 10th. I haven't put together the delinquent tax package yet, but it looks to be... It's, it's always pretty similar, and it looks like it's going to be pretty much like last year. The payments are not actually completely completed yet. There was a couple of, as you'll see, there were some, some bounce checks there. One of those bounced on the 10th and was, was discovered on the 10th, but the, the bank didn't get me a replacement, a, a copy of the check until today. I consider that an on-time check. So that still needs to be processed. So, so as soon as I have that, that last one in the bank, I will create the warrant for Holly to start working on. I think I'm supposed to have just 10 days, but because of that issue, I think that all of the mail has finally come in from, from the postmark on the 10th. So I'll get that to her as soon as I can. It'll probably, it'll probably be right after Thanksgiving. And at that time, we'll also have the refunds for overpayments will be on a, on a special warrant that I'll, I'll present right after Thanksgiving as well. If you want to look down towards, so you see the, we're at our high point for cash for the year. And also, in the next one, it will be the two checks to the school districts, and that'll get us back into a much more normal cash position. So if you want to go a little bit farther down, so that's our, that's our cash balance right now. And I wanted to point out that it's, that's actually understated because of those big checks you've been writing. There was the one for paving, I think it was with East Road.
Yes.
So that's, that's cash that is due to the general fund. So there's actually about $385,000 that need to be transferred back to the reserve funds. So that, that'll give you the actual cash balance. So you see, I, I put in the tax receipts. That's since the beginning of tax season, 6.1 million. That's, that's more than we had last year at this time, but because education taxes went up a bit, that's probably, as a percentage, pretty similar to last year. Want to take a quick look at the reserves? Very little activity here. Mostly, you're seeing at the 260 line, that's the water payments are coming in pretty briskly. They're due, I believe, the first week in December, so I'm getting a lot of payments on that right now. That park reserve, what was that, Dave? I don't remember. Was that a...
Park reserve, park reserve. Well, that was a transfer from the Board of Trustees that we had asked for, for all the work we did in the park during the summer.
Right. That was, the, the, most of the trustees' money goes to specific lives in the general fund, but that was, that was a special case this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions about any of that? Okay. So then I have one other issue I want to talk about, and I'm going to, going to keep it in general terms so as not to use anybody's private information in public, but if you have follow-up questions that you need to ask me, we can go into my office and have an executive session. But I'll, I'll give it to you in a broad outline. I'm, I'm asking the five of you to, to do something that's a little unusual, and I've already discussed it at length with Dave and with Nemrick and with auditors. So I'm going to, in broad outlines, last year, I wrote, you may recall that there were three refund checks that we issued very, very early last year. And I made a mistake, and I did not, and I reissued those with the, with the refunds that went out in November and the normal schedule. I didn't catch the error. Our auditors, Jordan, caught it. So in, in all three cases, I had sent duplicate checks. In all three cases, they were cashed. And so that, obviously, Jordan said, you've got to get that money back. That's not, they, it was not, they weren't entitled to it. So what that did was it created, once we did all the accounting, it created a delinquency for last year. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. So this year, with this tax bill, one of the, the three parties had a very large refund coming again. And so what I was advised to do as the accounting of, of it was to net the two years. So to take the delinquency from last year, balance it out against the refund due this year. Are you following me so far?
Yes.
Yep. The, the, the people who... So they would have gotten a check just for the difference.
Difference.
Yeah. The, the people who were affected by this very strongly wanted to keep the two years separate, and they had, had a, a reason for it that we don't need to go into now, but take my word for it, it's a legitimate reason. So, so they would prefer to have that delinquency go to Holly and to get the, the refund that they are due this year go to them, and then pay all of the fees and interest on the last year's delinquency.
In a separate transaction.
Rather than combining the two years into one.
Okay.
Okay.
To complicate factors, the property has changed hands. So the delinquency cannot go to the new owner, which would be the, because that, when they, when the property changed hands, that delinquency did not exist. So what I'm asking is for you to approve, for me to create a contract with these people. It'll go to, to Holly as a normal delinquency. It'll be treated as a normal delinquency, but it will not be going with the parcel, it'll be going with the person. Delinquencies go with the parcel, not the person. You've heard me say it a million times. So with, with your approval, I will handle that this way. If you have any follow-up questions, we, that would require more personal information than we would have to have a, an executive session. But I'm asking you on the record to approve that as a method going forward, unless you don't. I mean, if you, if you don't agree, then I think you would trump me, so...
What would be alternative ways to deal with it?
The, the accounting way would be to combine the two years.
And is this something that comes up frequently in your estimation?
It does not come up frequently. I have only recently learned that these large negative tax bills, there, we had three of them again this year, are, I talked at length to the tax department. Those are generally, and I didn't know this before, generally owing to a, an error in some paperwork that somebody filed with the state, and the state will often discover it themselves. They don't give me a new, I'm getting into more detail. They don't tell me. They have a side, side conversation with the homeowner, and, and it never comes to the, to the town.
And can I clarify what you were asking us to kind of do in this situation, to do in this situation for this particular error, but also going forward as well, so if this happens again, that it would just be a matter...
Well...
I'm just clarifying, is it just this one time, or is this going to be kind of...
It should be just this one time. The reason that I am bending over backwards is that it really, it was my error that, that started everything. That's what created the retroactive delinquency for last year. I can, I, I could bore you to tears telling you why Nemrick has a problem that made this happen, but I, I don't want to make you cry, so...
Thank you.
It's, so it is for, this is a one, one time...
A one time for us to handle this.
Yes. And now that I've had this conversation with the state, I will know to look out for, for tax bills that have significant negative balances, because they're not really supposed to happen.
So by signing this warrant, is that all you need, or do you need another motion?
I, I don't, I think we need a motion to...
You need a motion to approve what Melanie just proposed.
Yeah.
And then a separate motion to sign the warrant when the contract or agreement is signed by all parties.
Yeah.
That should be signed after all the parties sign the agreement.
We don't sign this tonight.
Not tonight.
Yeah, I, maybe I didn't make that clear. So what I, what I'm proposing is, is to make a contract with the affected people, that they will sign a, a contract to repay the last year's delinquency at our standard terms. And when I have that contract signed, then I will give them the refund check for this year. So then we'll be, both years will be taken care of as separate transactions, but happening at the same time.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? I know this is an unusual situation.
So entertain a motion?
Yeah, I could make a motion to handle this in the way that Melanie describes, her preferred method of handling.
I second that. Okay. It's a motion by Mike, seconded by Tony. Discussion? It's clear as mud.
You did a very good job.
Yes.
And then you swayed. I'm like, oh, I understand what you're saying now.
Okay, go ahead.
Appreciate it. We just stand it for as long as it takes to do this, and yet I'm going to lose it.
So no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, 5-0-0.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
And then the, I guess we'll have, Art will sign the warrant for the...
What we can do now is we can make a motion to sign the warrant for payment on receipt of a signed agreement by all parties.
Only then.
Only then, while the check will be issued.
So sign it out.
Yeah, I think that works.
Because that way, there won't be a big time delay, because we'd have to put this off for another two weeks to another meeting.
You're right, yeah. No, I think that, that time is of the essence.
Then we have to make a motion to do what...
Just a...
Just this, William, the motion would be to sign a warrant for issuance of, issuance of the check pending receipt of, of the agreement signed by all parties.
So I make that motion, exactly what she said.
And it's for $1,920.35. So I have a motion by Martha, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion on that? So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Could I have you pass those on to Dave back there, or if you keep them?
Actually, I think I can go with the other, the other warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Joe, through the Water Department, or Fire Department.
Yeah, they all use water anyway.
So to bring us up to date, at our last meeting, we will open the bid.
We will.
It is the only one.
Only the one.
We don't, we are not compelled to take just one bid, but we asked you if you thought it was reasonable, you thought it was a bit high, and we're going to go back and look over why it was, why it was high.
Just a little history, if, back in 2020, if you purchased a fire truck, it was about $350,000. Well, if you look at the price now, three years later, it's almost double. So you can blame on COVID, whatever you want to do, the industry...
It's a lot bigger truck, too.
It's a lot bigger truck. But to me, you know, the increase is phenomenal, and it's not going down ever again. I've been told by several in the industry that, you know, this is the way it's going. But also, the total time of getting the truck is three years. So we're purchasing a truck now, this will be three years old from the time we purchased it. So going through the specs, we found about 20 items that we need clarification or corrections on, and nothing major, nothing to increase the price, but stuff that we felt needed to be done. One of the things is they gave us a payment plan, and Dave and I discussed it and, you know, kind of wish we could, because we'd get a break. Every time we made a payment, a payment on the truck, we would get a discount. But because we're talking $690,000 and change, it's just not reasonable for us, the Town of Shasberry, to afford it. We are proposing, the Fire Department, I think Dave agreed, that we buy the chassis outright, so that's ours, you know, once it goes to the factory. Right now, the 2024s are sold out, you can't buy one, so it would be a 2025. And once it gets to the factory, they'll put an order in for it, and I can't tell you when it will get there, but we will pay for it. And like I said, it'll be outright, it'll be ours. So if something happened to toying or whatever, we can go get our chassis, and it'd be ours, it won't be stuck there at that factory. With that said, I'm not sure if you saw the, the proposal, but there was a bond, a price of almost $7,000, $6,699, to put towards the, the truck, to ensure that everything with the chassis was right, and that, that, you know, if anything happened, we, we can't get the chassis back, that bond would cover us to get the, our fee back. But since we're buying outright, we can delete that, not, and not actually delete it, but not have to pay for that performance bond. There was an $18,000 contingency fee in there. The industry is being made by the federal government to enhance the performance of pollution control for trucks for 2025. That $18,000, that would be, it's part of the price, would go towards that engine if we ended up having to have it. If we're lucky enough to buy the chassis before that kicks in, then that $18,000 would be deleted from the price, but, you know...
$18,000?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's probably a good thing, but it's an expensive thing. And like everything else on a fire truck, it's expensive. If you put fire in front of it, then you're going to pay twice and three times as much as you would for anything else. So we're hoping that we'll, we'll get that 2025 before that mandate is kicked in by the federal government. Now, the payment of the chassis was $135,000. We looked at our sinking fund, and we have the money currently in there, so we can buy it. And because we paid for it outright, we'll get a deduction of $10,506. So it, it does behoove us to do that. But we can't go any farther, we can't do a 50% or a 70% or 75% payment. We just don't have the money to do that. We're looking at 900 days, so it'll be three years for the truck to get here. But with the schedule that we have set up, and Dave and I have gone over, with a little bit of a step each year for the sinking fund and the appropriations that we would be voting on by the townspeople, we would have the money in hand when that truck was due to be Where we could cut, probably not much of anything. It's a very basic truck, it's not something that has a lot of bells and whistles on it that would make it, you know, that much cheaper. We are going to try to work to see if we can get, you know, maybe we can get a deal here and there on some things, but, you know, I'm not going to make any guarantees, I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
So at this point, they are asking us for December 6 deadline for the chassis price, because if we don't do it by then, it could go up again.
And is that payment by December 6?
It's the order, because we're not going to pay for it until it gets to toying.
Right.
Yes.
And that could be a year and a half out.
Yeah.
Cost is not important to us, because that money's already, we already have that amount.
I didn't want to pay for some of it.
No, no. When toying has it, when toying has it, we'll, we'll insure the chassis.
Yes.
And that's the other reason we don't need the performance bond, because if they mess up what they're putting on it, that's not our problem, and if they wreck the chassis, it's insured anyway.
Right. We want to make sure the chassis is what we are ordering, too.
It doesn't happen.
That's a lot of money for it to go wrong.
Yeah.
Is it chassis, just, it's just the front end and a empty rear?
Yeah, the rails.
And then the January 5th is the deadline for the body, which means the order of it, not any payments or anything, but to let them know that, yes, we're going to go with, with toying, but you really, if you did this December 6, you've kind of committed yourself to, to the heavens.
Yeah.
It's an expensive dump truck, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So unless you have any questions or anything you need clarification on, I'm not sure. As you can see, it's quite extensive, so we could be here for a long time if I were to go through this whole thing. After Dave has gone through it, and I think you've come up with a, a pretty good, you know, plan for the, the monies of it over the next three years.
Yeah, financially, it won't add much of a burden on. As I discussed with Joe, the bigger issue comes. We're working on a 15-year replacement plan for each truck. This is a much bigger truck, a much more expensive truck for the one that was supposed to be purchased right now, and these delivery times are throwing everything out of whack. Three years to wait for a truck to be delivered is incredible, really. So we'll have to adjust more to get to the truck after this one. That'll be a little bit more of an issue, and that truck is aging, so, you know, that still has to be developed a plan for that. But it, even the scope and what that is, is kind of up in the air at this point, too, so...
Yeah.
We're talking so far down the road at this point.
Yeah, and the funny thing is, you know, we're, we're going to have to come up with some creative ways to afford, you know, a replacement truck needed 2030 or '33, whatever it may be. And we've had some discussions, and it's just, I, I don't know. Because if you look at this jump, the next truck would be around a million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, we're going to get a million dollars.
Yeah.
Realistically, so...
So at the, yeah, so at the time, at the last meeting, when he opened the bid, there was no, all we did was just give it to him. So I think we need to entertain a motion to accept the bid.
To accept the bid, and...
So we can have discussion, but I think, before we have discussion, let's have a motion.
Motion could be vote to accept the bid from Shakely Fire Truck Sales of Round Lake, New York for $669,978.14.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid that they've just detailed.
That's a motion by Mike.
I thought you were going to second. Second? I thought you were going to second.
It's seconded by Tony.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Now we can...
Doesn't look like we have a lot of choice.
No.
I agree.
No, no, I agree.
Thank you for doing all of that work. It seems like you looked into a lot.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I'm a taxpayer. It's absolutely crazy. And like I said, we gotta come up with a creative way to purchase the next one. I don't know how that is or what we'll do. I'm talking to different people in the industry to kind of get, you know, a sight on the future and what we can do and what we can stay away from. You know, the truck we're replacing, just since Thursday, the rear compartment, compartments, we couldn't open them, they just rusted so bad. The backup light, the whole housing, the power. We didn't have brakes last night at a call, so we had to. So the truck is showing its age, you know. And unfortunately, we're gonna have to put a little bit of money into it, get through the next three years. You know, and, you know, as much as I hate to, but, you know, it's a vital piece of apparatus for the north. And as I said, we're gonna have to, you know, crunch some numbers to figure it out and not wait three years. You know, work on that, the following truck.
Any further discussion?
Are you doing a volunteer's job?
Actually, I was surprised. At our last meeting, I asked our secretary, Mike Taylor, you know, how many guys do we have? I mean, we're down to eighteen. And we had thirty-two when I became chief, you know, twenty-five years ago. But it shocked me. I never put two and two together when I'm filling out fire reports and making attendance that we were down that far. And when I say eighteen, you know, a few of those are older gentlemen. And they're not, you know, as active as they, you know, were thirty, twenty, fifty years ago.
Right, right.
So, and that includes me, I'm not as active as they used to be. So it's, we did just get a new, a new member, but, you know, we're aging out. And we got a couple of members that, you know, left this year, one deceased. You know, so, so the fire services or first responders in general are under the pressure of volunteerism.
So any other discussion, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? So carry five zero.
The last thing I want to say is, you know, I really appreciate the support that the select board and previous select boards have always given the fire department. We try to do our job best we can and just, just.
We appreciate you and Oliver, too.
We appreciate you, because without you, then we, you know, we'd be a pickle, you know. And I see other towns where they have strife and I just, I'm blessed.
No drama here.
Just, you know, anything we can do for this town and for the select board and for this guy over here who does a tremendous amount of work for us. So thank you.
Just give me a copy of the contract.
Yeah, I'll give you a copy tomorrow.
Okay.
Next is the DPW report, but I think we'll have Oliver, if you want to come up and take the chair, and then you can report afterwards.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I have to say that I am a big fan of this board, having seen you all on Zoom a lot. First of all, I just wanted to say that we're here.
Film stars.
Absolutely. I'm here, we're here to talk about a flooding issue on our property. So to give you a little history, in June two thousand sixteen, we purchased the house and property at ninety-nine Cold Spring Road in Shasberry. So Kirk, oh, sorry, this is my husband, Kirk Jackson. I'm Ollie Wadsworth. Kirk had been living there for over a year prior as caretaker for the previous owner. One of the issues he dealt with was extensive flooding of the front lawn because of a culvert that diverted water from the wetland across the road, across Cold Spring Road, directly onto the property. At that time, the culvert was approximately eighteen inches below street grade. Mitigating this problem was a stipulation we made to purchasing the house. So what happened was the previous owner put in a catch basin on our side of the culvert with an eight-inch pipe that moved water further south on our property, below ground, about three hundred feet, and came out and dispersed in our field. While the previous owner paid for this, it affected the selling price of the property. The result is, we no longer experienced the lake forming in our front yard. Problem solved. Problem solved until, from two thousand sixteen until April twenty twenty-two, when the town replaced the culvert that goes across Cold Spring Road onto our property. The new culvert is significantly lower than the previous one. We have video with measurements showing that the previous culvert was approximately eighteen inches below grade, while the new one is at least three feet below grade. This obviously changed the hydrology of the situation. Our solution to address the problem was not geared for this greater volume of water. And subsequently, we are again experiencing flooding in our front yard. We have videotape records of this. Standing water that often remains for a week or more. Also, in April twenty twenty-two, a second culvert was installed, which keeps water on the same side as the wetlands, that's the north side of Cold Spring Road, and directs it east towards Cold Spring that emerges on the corner of Colter and Cold Spring. This is downhill, which is where the water wants to go. But this second culvert is set at a much higher level, maybe a foot below road grade level. So obviously, this second culvert doesn't really do much as the vast majority of water goes through the much lower culvert that drains onto our property. At the time the town lowered this culvert in two thousand twenty-two, we were told by the foreman for the Department of Public Works that both culverts would be set at the same elevation so as to share the volume of draining. Obviously, didn't happen. So we need your help. We would like the town of Shasberry to address the fact that we designed and implemented a system to deal with a problem caused by the town. It worked. But then four years later, the town made changes, perhaps inadvertently, that now make our efforts inoperable and are significantly damaging our property.
The pipe that goes across your field and sees daylight down below, that was put in probably thirty-five, forty years ago by Stuart Hoskins.
No, no, no.
Well, there was a pipe.
The pipe that you, what Stuart put in were pipes that had holes and then dispersed like fingers. That's not what this is. This is a brand new.
So Stuart, Stu's pipe was replaced, then?
Stuart's pipe wasn't working anymore, it was filled with silt. That system was, didn't work anymore.
So that's when the previous owner put in the pipe, eight-inch pipe that goes all the way across our lawn in two thousand sixteen. What you're talking about is defunct, was defunct. They dug it up and they found pipes that were clogged.
Yeah, okay, good enough.
I'm getting stuck. I just am trying to visualize it all. If you're not familiar with that side of town, it's hard for me. So when you say that it was a problem, you had solved a problem that the town had inadvertently created. How, could you go back to how that happened? Because I just got lost.
So this is before we purchased the property. In two thousand sixteen, we had the previous owner, contingent to buying the property, put this long pipe, three hundred feet, across the lawn and seeing daylight in our field.
But what was the problem that the town created that that pipe solved? How did, how did the problem?
The culvert just dumped water onto the lawn.
The culvert?
The original culvert. And put the water on the lawn. And then these finger-like things that were put in thirty years ago were supposed to help disperse the water, but they aged out.
So the culvert was put in long, long ago?
I don't.
The original culvert, there's a wetland directly across from their property. So the culvert was bringing the water across the road. The system was put in, like Art was saying, to just take it down. And they just, they wanted just to drain off to the sides, too. And that was clogged and replaced when they purchased the house. And then I think Mike at some point can come up and explain part of the problems that come with state standards and why these had to be increased in size, which isn't addressing your problem, I understand right away, but you can explain that. But there's a big wetland there, which is.
Is this something, because I haven't sat on Cold Spring Road in a while, that we potentially might, as a select board, go and look at as a group to just assess the lay of what's happened? Because I kind of have a sense of where this is and where it's draining, but I think visually seeing it.
Very complicated.
It sounds like, and I appreciate you being this very succinct about it, but I am a very visual person and I think it would be very helpful to kind of just see where it is, where this pipe is draining, where the side, the newer side pipe that is hired to do it. Is that something that we could, we could put, just while we're discussing?
That culvert has a lot of history. I can remember at least sixty-five years ago, I was just a teenager, when my grandfather was a selectman and Tyler Resch stood there and begged my grandfather to lower the culvert even more, because his theory was that the field is quite wet. The field has a lot of springs in it. And his theory was that by draining that right next to the road over onto Egg Downings, I think, land at that time. Also, there were never, that wasn't part of the lawn, that was just part of the field. You know what I'm saying? It wasn't like we dumped water onto the, onto somebody's lawn. That was just a field and kind of gone through. So, so there's a lot of history there. That culvert's been there a long, long time. And there's been arguments over whether it should be raised or lowered and all that sort of stuff. Mike, if you want to come up and just explain.
Do we?
No, he can come.
We'll just add another chair.
Trying to find a picture of why we replaced the culvert in April of twenty-two. Having a hard time finding it. I wanted to show you. I know I have it somewhere. But the reason so, and before May, that culvert was replaced probably like two thousand fifteen, fourteen or fifteen. And they replaced it with a twelve-inch pipe. And that road sees a lot of traffic. And what happened was the pipe was collapsing. And it broke inside, inside the pipe. You guys remember? And it was all filled with debris and stuff. And on the side that looks like a wetland, but I'm pretty sure it's not a wetland. It's not classified, it's too small, from what I was told by the lady that works for the State of Vermont. The wetland on Resch's property is actually up back where that horse is now. That little spot down there is too small to be classified as a wetland.
But it's.
It's very wet.
But it is a wet area.
It's a wet land, but not classifiable.
So it's not protectable.
May I interject here? We've heard that it is a wetland and from Rebecca Chalmers from the Vermont Department of Conservation. And she sent us a map and she designated that it was a wetlands, this area right here.
Okay.
Rebecca's the wetlands specialist.
So she is the person that would be the.
I just wanted to address.
There's a new lady named Liz, whatever, I can't remember, I have an email from her, who's taken over for her. And that's who I've been talking with on everything else.
The main endeavor.
But yes, we're. What happened was that margins or whatever of that year, the water was right up close to the road, like real, and that's the picture I was looking for, because the ice and everything was starting to overtop the road because that pipe was clogged and failing. So we went in and replaced the pipe with the adequate size that the, our standards, our MRGP called for and everything.
Which is fifteen inches.
Yeah, it's eighteen inches. Any culvert across the road is eighteen inches. I did go over and look at it.
Okay, it's an eighteen inch.
It's an eighteen inch.
From a twelve, twelve to an eighteen.
Yeah. Yes, it was a twelve. And it's just, there was no coverage on that pipe and then just the traffic. And just when the guys were grading, they were, they were literally scuffing the top of the plastic, just ripping it apart, so. And that pipe that is downhill is not the same elevation. It is a lower elevation because the road slopes down. So all the water, and what happens is because it's so wet in there, that just keeps silting in, silting in. It's kind of a maintenance nightmare for the water to keep going that way. So it's, it's going into the higher spot and then all the silt is just silting in there. It's just something that needs to be cleaned out again. If you were to clean that ditch back towards your house, take six inches off, that'll divert water that way, like, you know, tomorrow, if you did it. You know, because these wetlands, they're so wet and then with the rains and everything, they carry so much silt that they silt in fast. And then the other thing is, too, that that eight-inch pipe that they put in your yard, three hundred feet, is, that's, that's really too small, the pipe anyways. Because even if that twelve-inch pipe was there with eighteen inches of, you know, it's still gonna clog up, clog up over time. Because eight inches over three hundred feet is, that's a long ways for a small diameter pipe. To be smaller than the one, you know, that the water, it would be better if they were the same size.
That's what we're worried about, is that it will get clogged up. And that was basically put in at our own expense to deal with the problem.
So I don't know what to say about that part.
So if you ditch from that culvert to my culvert, that would cause more water to fall that way, is that not right?
And the only time the water is going that way.
Water to fall onto their property or water to fall into where it naturally should be going?
It's not really naturally, it should be going any which way right there.
Going downhill to a.
Yes, it's thirty yards to where Cold Spring emerges. And that seems like the obvious place for it to go, because frankly, our water, eventually going down the hill through our, our field, basically in a, in a half a mile gets to Cold Spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't. I don't think we can not have some water come over onto you just because the culvert's always been there and that sort of stuff. But we can try to divert more water towards my culvert. And, and I think one of the things that should be pointed out is that there is a rule of thumb that you have to have so many inches of fill on top of it to support it, okay? And the rule of thumb is thirty is, for every inch of diameter of pipe, you have to have that much dirt. So by going from a twelve-inch to an eighteen-inch, that means that you have to have that much. And you didn't even put eighteen inches on it.
No, there isn't. And you can't even go lower on the outlet side because of where your catch basin grade is. You know, you can't go lower than that catch basin, because then the water would pond, you know, there.
This is our catch basin?
Yeah, so like where the pipe comes out, here's your catch basin and the pipe comes out. This elevation of the pipe can't be lower than your catch basin, because then the water would pond in front of it.
I see.
So that's, that's why it is, you know, really close to the elevation here. But the reason that it is that close is so that we could get, and I want to say there's only probably a foot of material over there. We lose. We lose gravel plowing, we lose gravel grading, we lose gravel driving with dust and everything, too. So it doesn't take long for a culvert on the dirt roads to actually become too shallow.
And my culvert is 30 inches, the bottom of the pipe is 30 inches below grade, because that's a 15-inch culvert, and there's 15 inches of...
Oh, yeah.
That's why...
That's where it ends, where it comes out.
Yes.
Not where it starts by the wetland, but where it comes out, yeah?
No, no, no. Where it, no. There's quite a bit of elevation drop there, where it comes out at the stop sign. Probably three or four feet of elevation drop there.
That's a lot.
But, no, he's saying from the height of his driveway, in the bottom of the culvert where the water would run.
Yes.
It's 30 inches. So you have 15 inches of pipe and 15 inches of material over top of the pipe.
Yeah, you'll have to come look at it.
I don't believe it's that. I think it's a foot total.
Oh, on yours?
No, on this culvert. That's what I'm saying in terms of...
That's what I'm saying, it's about a foot down.
In 2020, the second culvert was made, and we see that it's just about a foot. It's a foot below.
So it looks like we do just need to all go there together.
We definitely need to go see, I feel like.
It's a lot.
Take measures in your six.
Can I ask, are there any other options for remedying this besides ditching it in front of the second culvert to try to make it flow into the second culvert instead of the one that we're talking about now? Are there other options to divert it in a different way, or to put it into the wet marshy area that may or may not be a wetland? Or is there a way to cap it? Or I'm throwing out things, because I don't know.
If you could see that picture that I had, and it's probably on my computer, but if it was capped off, it'd be overtopping the road.
Okay, so it wouldn't flow?
And that's where it was put in to begin with, was because that...
My guess, that'd be why...
The water was just kind of flooding over the road.
Because that field behind there, you know, it's pretty steep hill, and it all sheds down to the road, and then your property is low.
That field is right full of springs.
I believe that.
It is.
Okay. So there aren't other options besides ditching it in front of that second?
The only option I think we have is, like, we have is some go on their property and some go the other way.
Okay.
I'm open for suggestions.
I don't know, do they make like Y pipes or something that like will divert the water in that kind of way, or some kind of...
Yeah, well...
If you're, you know, trying to get more water to go one way, so it's not flooding out what seems like maybe a small pipe that probably should be bigger, but you had done it by yourself, or the family prior to you had paid for it?
Yeah. So our contention is that our pipe is a lot lower than I guess what we've considered, what Art has said to be his pipe. And we have video that shows the flooding on our, on our field, and then barely dripping into Art's pipe, the second culvert.
Right, right.
And I think the visual shows what we've said to be true, that it's about a foot deep, the second culvert.
If you shoot grade on your culvert and that culvert, it's lower. If you shoot elevation at the bottom of the pipe, I wouldn't worry about how much material is above it or anything. So that's not, that's not really, that's just for, you know, structure of the pipe and everything, having that 15 inches of material. But what is crucial is the elevation on your pipe and the elevation on this pipe on the inlets, is this elevation is lower than that elevation. But from where the water is running into yours, and where the water is going into Art's, is this sediment has filled up, you know, since we've been there. And that's just something that's going to happen in wetlands all the time.
How frequently would you have to remove the silt for it to flow correctly?
Yearly. It very well could be one of them spots where you're going to have to do it yearly.
Okay. And how frequently do you do most of them? Do you have like a maintenance schedule that you follow to do every culvert in the town? I'm sure there's a ton of them, so.
Yeah.
I can imagine you couldn't do all of them every year.
We clean out the problem ones every year.
Okay, okay. So that might be one that just becomes...
Yeah, that might be one that we have to add out. Because we have some that, just on West Mountain Road, that just take so much sediment that we're up there two, three times a year.
Wow.
Just cleaning them out, because they take all the runoff from the mountain itself.
Right, right.
So I mean, it could be added to the list to clean that little bit section. And if you do it yearly, it's really not a hard thing to do either, too. It's not a long stretch either. It's two hours worth of work.
I see.
When we were doing this project, somebody called the wetlands, and they told me to stop, stop working on that. So that's why I did stop. And I talked to you about that before.
Stop, stop removing the silt from the second culvert? Or stop the diversion process that you had created with the culverts?
So we were allowed to replace the culvert across the road.
The original 1960 plus?
Yes, because that culvert is pre-existing.
Was pre-existing, correct.
The town is allowed to maintain that culvert. And maintaining that culvert means that if the water is overtopping the road.
Right.
We're allowed to save the road for the general public.
Yep, that makes sense.
And drain the water to where it needs to go. Well, and when we were over there, I said, well, we agreed to put the water towards Art's, and Art agreed to...
So how did you get the second culvert passed?
Didn't.
It didn't?
It didn't, because I was, I learned later, I was supposed to have gotten a wetland permit just to put in my car.
So is it illegal from the state of...
It's not.
Okay, it's not an illegal permit?
Because that is so small of an area, and it needs to be maintained.
Because of the road.
Because of the road, we are exempt from getting a permit to clean that section of that wetland. We're not allowed to go 30 feet back, but within the right of way, so...
I see, okay.
You know, so 25 feet from the center of the road, through that whole section, we are allowed to maintain that.
From the opening of their culvert to the opening of the one on Art's property, how far is it?
Ooh, 30 feet, maybe?
I was going to say 40. You could say 40 feet.
Ditched, unditched?
It was, started to be ditched until that Rebecca sent me an email and told me not to work there.
Why don't we go after the state? I mean, it took me two years to get the permit.
No, I talked to Josh and everything. We're allowed to work in...
Then why don't we just cut the ditch down?
That's fine with me. I just wasn't going to go back over there and create more problems. That's why I never went back.
Well, maybe if the board at all goes up and looks at this as an alternative, because if you ditch down to Art's, the volume going that way was far higher. And the volume that can pass through the pipe there would be far higher.
We did ditch it, but we did it very quickly, because...
Yeah, I've had my arguments with those people, too. So, you know, it's not fun, but...
No, but from what I was told, that that little section, that's part of maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, we would win, even if they wanted to fight us, we'd win. I mean, water has to go in some direction.
Would that be an acceptable thing? I mean, obviously, we would be looking at it, but would that solve the situation that...
If I understand what you're saying, then there'd be more water going through what we've termed Art's culvert.
Eastward, east to the south.
So in other words, the wetland would stay on the north side of Cold Spring Road?
Yeah.
And it would go down to Cold Spring, that emerges right on the corner of Colter and Cold Spring.
And at Colter and Cold Spring, does the culvert run diagonally across the road?
No, actually, it's under Colter, down a little bit, and then across.
He did. We replaced it.
He replaced it, yeah.
Had to, it was collapsed.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right, I forgot about that one. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a couple hours of work. It's not a big deal. We can do it tomorrow.
Because it could be designed so that it would only be when it overtopped the ditch leading to Art's culvert, which is probably the wrong way to phrase that. Then only the overflow would be going in their direction.
Correct.
Into their culvert.
Into their culvert.
But they would be, their pipe would be able to withstand that.
Because the elevation of that pipe is going downhill, and it is lower, that it would take more of the water towards the intersection, towards Art's and towards the intersection, towards Cold Spring. And when you get your heavy rain floods and everything, you are still going to get water into your pipe. It's not as much.
And if we stoned it?
I mean, you can try that and go from there.
If we stoned that out?
You can't stone it, because it's so soft, that stone's just going to disappear.
Oh, really? It's that soft?
Yeah.
We have stone on our side.
Yeah.
We have a...
Yeah.
To get one or two to catch...
We did that, yeah, so it doesn't erode, yeah. But where all that muck is, you put stone in there.
Yeah, it's just gone.
You won't see it by spring.
So do you guys feel comfortable with that solution?
Very much so.
Yes.
Yes, very much so. I do feel, I do feel the issue is still kind of complicated, and that it would help to have a site visit if you would be willing to do it, because I think that it's crystal clear.
When you see it.
I think, yes, I would prefer us seeing it before we make a final determination.
If we're going to do that, then we're going to fix it in the spring. I'm not, I can't, I can't.
You can't do it now.
Can't do it.
Yep.
Because the reason being is, well, it's not only going to freeze that, trying to excavate mud is just like impossible. So if we wait for it to, if we wait longer, like right now, it's probably a little drier down through there, because most of the water is going through their culvert. So like if we do it now, we can get it to go. But if we wait and wait and wait, and it's going to snow, and it's just not, you're not going to do a nice job to clean it up, that's...
Would you wait until spring?
Yeah, I mean, I just hope that our eight-inch pipe will hold up.
I think, well, it's not that old.
I guess I missed what you're saying. You said you could do it tomorrow. Now you're backing away from it.
No, no, I can do it tomorrow, but if you guys can't meet, because it's a holiday.
I would like to see it before we make that.
You want to see it before it's fixed or after it's fixed? I think it's important to see.
Maybe we could see it after it's fixed, so we really understand.
And see if it's working. That solution works?
No. Let's see it after it's fixed, and if it's not working, then we'll come up with another plan.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
That's what I would like to do.
Good.
I'd like to go there tomorrow and clean that out.
Good, good.
And then we'll schedule...
A time to take a look at it.
Before it's all deeply under snow.
Right, hopefully.
Which would be like the next week.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yes.
The way things are going. Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm willing to work, you know. Yeah, I don't want your guys' pipe to get clogged up, and, you know, I don't want the road to be amassed, too.
Of course.
If we figure out a solution.
Yeah, we understand.
We'll do what we can.
Great.
Terrific.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your damn road.
Thanks for coming here about it.
It's a bad road, anyway. The whole thing is, we're going to blow the whole thing up. We've got to get an executive session with the company. Okay.
I remember, Cheryl, I live right next door to Kirk and Ali. If we're going to tackle this right away, we don't want to close the road Thanksgiving week, do we?
The road won't be closed, it's a side ditching operation. It'll only take, what, a couple of hours?
It'll be graphic?
Yeah, it'll only take a couple of hours.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, the entire family coming, I think. Yeah, all the work is on the east side, everything, so we're good.
Yeah, it's just normal ditching, so it won't be...
They don't need to be closed.
Yeah.
The only reason we closed that road the last time was because we were changing the culvert.
Yeah, the long one across the road.
You know, there's no, that, there's no way to have too much traffic there to do the culvert.
Yeah, okay.
So you close it for a couple hours, and you put the culvert in.
Okay.
So plow trucks all mounted?
Yeah, plows, that's what we've been working on, kind of. Now we're just in like the, Dave would call it, the tinkering stage.
Yeah.
Just making sure, you know, stuff that you kind of overlook. And we've been doing services and changing oil and all that stuff on all the trucks and...
Are you happy with Buck Hill?
Buck Hill's done.
Buck Hill?
Yeah.
Is it all marked and everything?
It's not marked.
It's not marked.
I was told that they were going to mark it last week, but I don't think it's going to happen. I think we got too cold.
Yeah, that's so bad, because they did get around to a lot of late payer probes. We just worked none of them.
Yeah, all in all, I think it came out really well. Everyone I've talked to is really happy. And there's a little bit of stone line ditching that I'd like to add some more stone in the spring up by riding gun, after we shoulder that, just a little bit more by the saddle. But otherwise, I think we'll be out of there for quite a while.
A lot of work.
It was a lot of work. The guys did a real, you're welcome. The guys did a really good job. Paving guys did a good job. And then we put the shoulder gravel on, like a couple days after it was paved. But all in all, it looked really good. Yeah, besides just equipment maintenance, it's not really, not really going to start any projects before Thanksgiving, no tree brush or nothing, so. We'll see what the weather does, and we'll go over there and clean that ditch out. Go from there.
Shoot a grade, please.
Yeah.
I'd like to know what...
I'm gonna, I have a laser, I'm going to bring it over and shoot that. I know it's lower. We'll go from there.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Take care. Have a good night.
You, too.
We have talked about community appropriation policy. Don't need to just say that it's, we're trying to get our hands around it, a little bit of control. So this was, this was presented to us as a possibility, but also at the same time, we really need to discuss the libraries. Our thought was to put the libraries on the budget item, as a budget line item, negotiate with them, that sort of stuff. I just feel that the town is responsible for libraries.
Yep.
We don't have one, so we need to make sure, so...
Yep, definitely.
So is that, can we do two different...
Yeah, we need two motions, basically.
And this would be for what fiscal year?
This is, it has to be for next fiscal year, or we could put it off to '26.
So this, but if we were to negotiate with the libraries, it would be for 2025 budget line?
Yeah, it would be to start next July. So that may or may not be too quick. Part of me says it would be better to let them know that come next year, we're going to be negotiating a budget.
Yeah.
Than for me to call them tomorrow and say, guess what, you're a line item, and now you have to negotiate. So...
It doesn't give them much time to figure out what they want to say.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's kind of a monkey wrench in there that, you know, I mean, I[1707.12] Yeah, that's, yeah, it's kind of a monkey wrench in there that, you know, I mean, I don't even know if they're asking for increases, but had they, everyone, these had to go out last week. So included the parts of the policy, that if you're asking for an increase, you have to get a petition. And if you're asking new, you have to get a petition. Uh, but I, you know, I know we've talked about it and I've been thinking about it more, even as I was sitting here this evening thinking, you know, if the board voted that the libraries will be included as a budget item, we have to get on the phone with them right away and say, whatever you were thinking, you know, you might have to change your thoughts. And there is some reconciliation between the three libraries. McCullough gets the bulk of the money, Bennington's second at like eighteen thousand and, you know, Canfield gets a small portion, like twenty-five hundred. So I don't know if it would be better, something for the board to decide, to do the normal appropriations this year and notify the libraries that we're going to bring them on board. Because we did give the ambulance services a lot of notice that we were yet taking them off.
And, and how would that work? They would come before the board and, and make a decision? Or is there a committee that would be talking to them and liaising?
Uh, it, it all depends. Uh, the ambulance services, I just speak with and we stay pretty much close to it. But there's going to be upward pressure on that as these services have to develop into a more cohesive response force. And the libraries, uh, we'll just have to see how we can, I think that's going to take some conversations.
And I just wonder, is it, is it going to be a committee? Is it going to be with your successor? Is it going to be with the entire board?
I think, uh, that's up to the board. I think most budget items are better off done in, uh, with whoever my successor is. And any disputes passed there can come to the select board. But that can be decided down the road too. That doesn't have to be decided now. Uh, just the method, method we're going to use needs to be decided right now.
It's a little anxiety provoking to put something off to, to be done by somebody we haven't met yet.
Nor, yeah. Oh, well, yes.
Yeah, and then, you know, that's.
I think it might be something, especially if this person is coming in from away, that it might be worth having a, a committee of several of us with that person having those discussions.
Uh, that's up to you. There's a benefit to bargaining as a business as this is, this is business, this is money and.
Right.
It's not wishing well.
Right.
Right. So.
We also, yeah.
You can decide that later. With my successor.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess the first motion is, have we, let's, let's make a motion for the, putting the libraries on to the thing. But we still got to discuss what year we're going to do it, but that will be part of discussion, okay? So I'll entertain a motion that we put.
Say, I can make a motion to move the library funding to a budget line, Adam?
For fiscal 26.
Okay, that's what I want. Okay, yeah, let's make it. Then we can always amend it, okay? For, for the three libraries.
Yeah.
Okay? Second, second, that's a motion by Mike, second by Tony. Now discussion. Year, for fiscal year budget 26.
26, which starts in July of '25.
So they would go through for this cycle.
Yeah, this cycle, same.
Except if they're increasing, then they would have to get a petition of.
To a petition.
How many?
I think it's a hundred and fifty. Because we already have new petitions in for this year.
We, we already have new, okay, I see.
So.
Okay.
And of course, you know, this is part of why I wanted to formalize this for a long time. Because it was the concept of, you know, they come before the select board for approval, but they don't come before the select board for approval. They come before the select board to provide information on the organization. Because a petition is petition to get on the ballot.
And, and the.
And if they submit a ballot, a petition, and it's a valid petition, they're on the ballot regardless of what.
What we think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the petition has to be done via December meetings, is that?
No, the petition has to be, it's in, it's in the, that, it's in what they sent. Forty-seven days before, don't quote me on forty-seven days.
No, ninety days.
I'm just looking at the actual, um.
Schoolwork.
The actual application and it isn't on that, so.
I don't know which application you have, is the last one that I put out?
I don't know if it is the last one.
I don't think so.
But, but is it on the newest one?
Yes.
Okay.
The dates are on there because it's ninety days.
Okay.
It's ninety days if you're just sending in the, for a renewal, basically.
Okay.
The same amount. If your petition can be submitted to the town clerk, I believe it's forty-seven days before town meeting. And so any petition that she receives forty-seven days before a particular town meeting has to go on the ballot.
Got it, okay.
So.
So, but that's, that's not part of what we're talking about now. So let's, let's go back to the original motion.
Oh, right, yeah, that's, that's the end.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion and a second that we put the three libraries on a budget item for fiscal year 26, 2026, okay? Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carry.
Sound so far. Twenty-six.
Okay, now.
It really isn't.
No, it really isn't, no.
So now we are talking about adopting this as a policy, not an ordinance, right?
It's just a policy.
It's a policy. And would this, this would go into effect for?
As soon as you sign it.
As soon as we sign it. Which means that somebody wants to increase or something that hasn't already done it, is that right?
Anyone who's asking for an increase this year has to submit a new petition. And this goes towards, you know, this is the standard state policy, the VLCT policy, it's a standard draft. Everybody uses a variant of this. Well, I've been asking for years because we have no standards. And there has to be a way to control what people are asking for. So you go back to the voters, you get a petition and if you want an increase, you get your, whatever number of signatures it is, check it to town clerk, you can, it'll be on the ballot for the increase. If you can't get them, then you can put in for the one you had last year. It's, it's really quite simple, it's not a big miss me, most towns do it this way. Uh, and without any policy, it becomes very difficult in dealing with applicants. Because it's, it's confused the way we do it. And we have the backing of all the state law that, basically this whole thing is out of state law. Our other issue of how do we get people who have been on forever and just ask for the same amount forever? How do we address that? Uh, as I told Art earlier today, that's not addressed anywhere.
No.
So we're going to have to work on how to do that. Uh, and that might take some legal advice because I don't know if we can say, hey, you've been in the same amount for five years, you have to get a new petition. It doesn't, I haven't found that written anywhere in a state law. It says you can just say, time limit's up.
But you haven't found that, we can't do it either.
Haven't, yeah, the, the, the vagaries of some, some things. Can't say, can't find anything that says we can't, can't say anything that says we can, so. Other towns have done.
Doesn't precedent often hold or you can't?
Yeah, you know, there's, there's other towns that have broken things up to different categories so they can work it that way. But I think we really need to get something in place because this keeps slipping off the table and we can work on refinement as we go along. But I think it's time to get something down.
And how are you notifying, um, all of the folks that typically put it on there?
So I have a spreadsheet that.
Sending an email or you mailing it to them with like all of this new, if we sign it?
Yep, everybody has the same thing. It's been the same system for eight or nine years now. We used to be quite a production and I didn't have time for the production. So we made a simple email list, which isn't simple because we have so many community appropriations. And as usual, uh, because I never get an update from anybody who leaves a position or new people in these positions. So I got eight rejected and now I'm searching for who's in charge of this group or that group, so.
Yep.
So you have a proposed policy that's been sent to us, so that's what we'll be voting on as it is?
Yeah, I can make a motion to, uh, just adopt the VLCTC community appropriations policy.
Call it the Shasberry Community Appropriations Policy.
Shasberry Community Appropriations.
Yep, so it says right on the bottom. And we have, that's a motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Uh, to become effective with the day we sign it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, so open for discussion.
Can we add, like, it be renewed every three years?
I don't know. I, I think we really need to do a little digging to find out how to do that. And we can just add that as an addendum of this policy when we can.
I'm just thinking that that's.
It's, it's, you know, we brought this up a couple of months ago and I was searching around and then trying to figure out how we do a non-perceived as biased rotation of, oh, who wins and who loses? Who has to do the petition this year? Who has to do the petition the second year? Who gets an extra three years? You know, how do you spin our, whatever we have, what do we have, forty? Community appropriations? I mean, how do you spin who comes in, in what category? A big help will be removing the libraries. The libraries consume about forty percent, I think it is, of the community appropriations. So that, that will be a big help in rationalizing this a bit. But, uh, yeah, I don't know how we do that. I think it's something that needs to be done and it needs to be researched further into, there must be towns that do it. I just haven't come across one.
I thought we did it.
No. There's, there's things on here that I've gotten the same request year after year after year.
Yeah.
Isn't it true that some of them, uh, they need to have kind of some local buy-in to satisfy their grants essentially?
That's what, majority of them, yeah.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't want to screw someone's grant up?
No, you know, it's, yeah, and that is part of the whole thing. And that's why I think it's vague, to tell you the truth. And, and it's, uh, something that if we put in, we don't want to get challenged on right away. Or inadvertently cut somebody off their funding stream.
Right.
Because some of them are small, so you know that's part of the issue.
Part of their budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we need to generate this so we can get this grant from over here.
Yeah.
So, and a lot of these are not exactly operating on a huge budget anyway.
No.
Right.
Because I do, I mean, some of them are quite small, really, five hundred, a thousand.
Yeah.
You know, they've stayed that way, so I don't know if it's going to turn, just get a thousand dollars from, you know, it's not adjusted.
Yeah.
For like inflation rates.
Yeah. Yeah, but the increase is, uh, is the only way we can really have some control over it. And that's what's allowed by law is to, um, have a petition when you want the amount increased. So I think we need to take advantage of what, what we're allowed to do at least before we find out what we want to do and find out we shouldn't be, so.
In years past, have you had to remind people several times to get your application in?
Yeah, uh, maybe we've. Prior to, prior to this, uh, when I first got here, this was quite the production of multiple phone calls, letters and everything.
Should be their responsibility, yeah.
Yeah, when I took it over, I kind of scrunched it right down to, yeah, these are the dates. And I get all those applicants on time. And this year I've made it clear that you have told whatever date it is, like when I sent it out, December ninth.
Yeah.
And if you don't, you're just not on. And this year, we have a real time factor because Marlene and I have limited time to get this together before I depart. So, um, late things are just not going to be acceptable. And it's, other than the new groups that's petitioned anyway, they're going to go on one way or the other. Everybody else is, is kind of the same, so there's nothing new here. There may be new people, but they're taking these roles and, and this is, I mean, they must be sending these out to every town in the county at minimum, so they should be up on it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any, no further discussion? All those in favor of adopting this policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so carry, five zero zero. So the town of, town of Shasberry. On this twentieth day.
Yes, November.
November. We do solemnly amend this and so we sign it here.
No. Mike, no matter, no matter how I rotate this, Mike. Share my successful vibe in rotating.
A protest.
I think an owl, I saw an owl in the woods, it could swing its tail.
Yeah. They've improved the owls now. It may be worth getting.
Really?
Yeah, because there were, there were a lot of difficulties with them, even servicing them when they first came out.
Being on the receiving end of it, it is.
Yeah, but the other part, problem here is with the closeness, I mean, this thing coming and swinging back at you all the time.
Oh, my God.
Martha, would you like to tell us about the 250th anniversary commission?
I have no idea about it.
Oh, you sent this to me? I thought you were going to talk about.
I did not send it to you.
Who sent this to me?
So I'm not sure.
I thought you sent this to me.
I appreciate it and I think it's important.
I think it came to us.
I think it came to.
Oh.
Was it via?
Who asked me to put this on the agenda?
It was from the state of Vermont.
Well, let me explain it then.
Yeah.
Because several months ago, I, I joined the national one after someone on the EDC was talking about this, which hadn't rung a bell with me, but it's the 250th anniversary of the Dec, signing of the Declaration of Independence. It's a three-year celebration, which will have events here in Bennington and Hubbardtown. The state now, excuse me, is looking for each community to get somewhat involved in it by forming a group of volunteers who will help envision and implement a meaningful commemoration for your community for these upcoming anniversary years. So admittedly, I'm confused because I thought someone asked me to put this on the agenda. I blamed Martha, but maybe it's not.
But it seems to me it should be on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we should.
This is something.
And that we would have to.
Yeah, yeah, some, yeah, I mean.
I can see you in a costume now.
Oh, yeah, this is definitely my kind of.
Yeah.
But I recognize that we have to do it.
Yeah. Well.
So, so, so they're recommending, the state of Vermont is recommending each town has kind of.
Have it like a little community.
To do some kind of thing during that three-year period.
And on a national level, this is, this is pretty well developed already, starting with, with events in Boston and right up and down the East Coast eventually, over three years. I know the closest event here is Bennington Battlefield and Hubbardton Battlefield. Of course, much to do with this Aratoga area and that. So it would be nice to have a community group involved in just at least tracking things and making notices so that people are aware of it and anything that could be incorporated here in our beautiful new town, Green, with a pavilion.
I'm going to refer this to the historic society. The historic society.
I could pass this right along to them. Actually, that would fit right into them.
Exactly.
Oh, good idea.
Idea.
I just, I mean, give them something to do.
Yeah.
You know, James, he sent me an email this morning, so I will.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Action.
And I will, I will find out who sent this.
I'm sorry, it was not me. Or if it was, it was in a state of, uh, a fugue state.
Okay. At our last meeting, uh, when Dave wasn't here, we were confused over the reasoning for errors of admission.
I'm sorry, do we have to vote on this because it's a resolution?
Uh, the thing I just had?
Uh, the, the 250th anniversary resolution?
No.
Okay, sorry.
No.
Uh, overplied the errors in admission certificate. It's a good thing we didn't vote on it because we were supposed to sign it and there wasn't any signs, place to sign on the back of it, so.
Yeah, the first copy I got, the signature page is eliminated, so that must have been a little confusing when it came to the table.
So maybe Dave can explain to you why it's sixty thousand seven hundred dollars.
Uh, because we own the property. But this is the property back here that we bought and they left it on the tax rolls. And I actually got a tax bill in the mail. I said, well, we're not paying our taxes, so this is just to correct the error. Uh, when we bought the property, it should have been taken off the tax rolls and it wasn't.
And the sixty thousand seven hundred is what it was appraised for?
Appraised, that was the appraised value of the property, yeah.
We paid.
Yeah. And which is pretty standard. The appraisal value is always below the sale value. So that's all this really is, that, uh, when we purchased it, they failed to take it off the tax rolls. So this is an errors in admissions that eliminates the tax liability to the town.
It just lowers the grand list too.
Yeah, lowers the grand list, too.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the form.
Of errors and.
Errors and admission.
Okay.
Second.
That's a motion by Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, 500. Someplace there should be something to sign.
It's on the second page.
Second page, okay.
It's very small on the right side.
Oh, right, right there.
Yeah, it is small. Oh, I don't know why.
Signature select line.
Yep, okay.
I guess that means we don't have to sign.
No, I'm not selecting.
Select board, it says.
Is that what it says?
Says select board.
Does it say all of them?
Okay.
What do they call all those then?
They are.
Yes.
I saw something.
Yeah.
To what?
I can't remember what they, they're just. From Massachusetts, I was reading something from that.
Yeah, because that's where most of those titles are in Massachusetts. Some in New York, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's an old Dutch thing, I believe.
So up to other business before we go into executive session. Anybody have anything? Want to bring up anything?
I guess I have one quick question. Greg at the transfer station just asked about reimbursement for steel-toed boots. Is that something?
Oh, I'll look into it.
I just told him I'd bring it up and I've forgotten for two months now or something.
I don't think I've ever seen a receipt from him. All right, I'll look into it.
Yeah, I wondered if he had a receipt, but, uh, he said something about once a year, someone told him he could get reimbursement for steel-toed boots.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. We'll, we'll figure it out. I guess maybe he just bought a pair and thought we just sent him a check at some point.
Yeah, I think he did buy a pair, but, hey, I.
I'll talk.
Yeah, I told him I'd bring it up and I keep forgetting, too.
No, that's all right. I'll, I'll talk to him. He probably did just buy them and figured we were giving him a check at some point to cover it. Okay.
Okay, review of action items. Let's see, we're going to, uh, send the 250-year thing to.
To the.
Historical society.
Society.
You're going to.
Get Greggy some boots.
Yep, you're going to sign it, sign a contract with, for the fire truck.
For the fire truck, yeah.
They have to schedule a time to go to, to look at your culvert and theirs.
Yep.
And that has to be a warrant special meeting.
Right.
That's, are we talking immediately or talking in spring?
Well, I think, I think the last thing that was suggested was Mike dig it out and see what happens and then it was, so maybe we don't have to schedule one.
Right.
Is it possible this will be a kind of.
You can all just go by in groups of two or whatever and just have a look. Art, I think he's probably pretty familiar with it.
Yep, sure.
Yeah, so I mean, it's something that you can all just look at, but the real tell will be in the spring anyway, because it's not going to be much now.
That's what I'm thinking.
But see what happens in the spring. That'll be the interesting part.
What else is there?
I think that was it.
Yep. Community appropriations.
You're going to send, I'm assuming, the community appropriation, the new thing to all the people that do your email list serve?
They've all been notified of it. It's all in there.
All right. Um, entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel, real estate and legal.
So.
Move by Mike.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Um, all those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We could be here quite a while, so I think it's more comfortable here.
Just sit.
Could you pick right up in a few minutes?
Will there be action?
No.
There will be no action afterwards.